Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of November 5th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Tonight, President, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick. Mr. Bowen, joining us via the Internet is Ms. Quirk, and I believe Mr. Sullivan should be with us momentarily, and Mr. Bessie is absent tonight.
Thank you. I declare that there is a quorum presence. Mr. Bowen, would you say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States-
With the United States on it.
And to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. Are there any residents who would like to address this board? No. Seeing none, I will move on to announcements. Ms. Quirk, any announcements?
Not tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett, any announcements?
I just want to say, I voted in person today. I like to do that. I view it as a privilege to be able to vote, and it was packed. I voted at the Redmond, and I was--there were over 500 people voted before I did, and there was a little line to get in, and I talked to the poll workers, and they said it had been crazy all day. So that is really wonderful, that so many people came out to vote today.
What time was that, Senator?
We were about 1:00 o'clock.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's over 5,000 votes right now.
Wow.
That's it? Mr. Chadwick?
Nothing.
And myself, I just want to remind everyone about the Veterans Day Parade on Monday. The parade steps off at 10:00 a.m. There will be a ceremony at Center Park at approximately 11:15 or so, depending how long the parade is. After the Center ceremony, Center Park ceremony, there is a luncheon for veterans and their families, and we're looking forward to having a great time. Main Street will be closed, and there will be no parking on Main Street that day until after the parade has passed. Okay, we have a 7:15 hearing and a 7:30 hearing, so we are going to move forward, Mr. Chadwick, for eight licenses and permits, please.
I move for the renewal of the following year-round common vic license for the year ending December 31st, 2025, under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Massachusetts General Laws for the following businesses as printed in the agenda, as long as all paperwork and approvals are set for Starbucks Corporation, Riverside Cafe, Peace Cafe, Kadoba Company Restaurant, LLC, Nerea Energy Retail, P&amp;D Management Group III.
Motion made and seconded to approve pending the re--all inspections and payment of all fees. Is there any further discussion on that motion? I will ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mrs. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Make sure you're on mute.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move for the renewal of the following Class 1 license, as long as all paperwork's in order and all approvals are met, we're in Ford.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a Class 1 license. There are three different classifications for car licenses, and we are doing some of them. Most of them need to be, or all of them, need to be renewed by December 31st, and so you will see a lot of these coming up. And again, the office does a lot of the checking of the paperwork, and it is their responsibility to make sure that the license doesn't get handed out until all of the provisions have been met. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve that one? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following Class 2 used car dealer license for the year 2025 under MGL Chapter 140, Section 58, pending all inspections and all paperwork is in order, as printed in the agenda, Discount Auto, Inibol Baroso, and Collision Tech.
Second with a question.
Yes.
So this is a rookie question. I noticed in the paperwork for these Class 2 licenses, the number of cars, I'm assuming, allowed on the lot was noted, and I'm not saying that this goes for any of the people we're voting on tonight, but you can certainly drive around town and see some used car dealers or whatever have a lot of cars jammed into their lot. Is that part of what goes into having their paperwork in order if they meet that part of the permit?
Depending on questions.
Good question. Yes, the number of vehicles is always on the license. Some dealers, particularly 2s and 3s, in the past four years probably lost some real estate to the Highway 6 and 28, so they may be looking more jammed than they had been previously, but yes, the number of vehicles is on the license and for the reason that, you know, there's a certain number of spaces under our zoning bylaws that are for cars and then for trucks, that's just different spatial arrangements. Good question.
Does someone go out and count them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following Class 3 license, Robertson's Auto Salvage.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mrs. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We will continue to move on. We appointed Jared Fredrickson to the Library Board of Trustees two weeks ago, but we didn't have a specific date for the termination of his appointment, and he's done all of the paperwork, but we needed to make sure that we had a time specific that ends up in the rotation so that there's not all of them expiring at the same time. So we have chosen that June 30th, 2026.
Okay. I move for the ratification date of Library Board of Trustees' appointment for Jared Fredrickson with a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to ratify with a term to expire the appointment of Jared Fredrickson. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mrs. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, aye, it is so.
I move to accept a donation from Patricia Rodriguez to the Wareham Police Department in the amount of $100.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a generous donation. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to accept a donation from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library to the Spiny Memorial Branch for Operating Expenses in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a generous donation to the Spiny location. Any further discussion on that motion? The record will show that Mr. Sullivan is here at 7:07?
1908. 7:08, sorry.
7:08, okay. Any further discussion on accepting that donation? Roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Now, okay, we were notified by the owners of Scarlet Rose Bistro that they were closing the business immediately and that they would not be renewing their license. Their license, which they had paid for, ends on December 31st of this year, so in order to have them properly give up their license or end close, because they have no intention of reopening, this board must vote to allow that closure, and then that must be sent to the ABCC. Okay? So, any questions about that? I'll have a motion then.
I move to approve the request for closure of Scarlet Rose Bistro, 196 Main Street, Wareham Mass, from October 31st through October--excuse me, December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the closure. Any further discussion on that? And again, the license was granted through December 31st. Yes, Mr. Bowen, go ahead, please.
Madam Chairman, do you know if they are going to surrender the license immediately or are they going to hold on to it through the end of the year?
They're going to hold on to it through the end of the year because the business is for sale.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the clarification, actually. Any further discussion on the motion to allow the closure? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so.
Do you want to do consent?
Yep.
Minutes? All right. I move to approve the meeting minutes of October 1st, 2024.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of October 15th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so. We have a 7:15 hearing, and I cannot call it until it is 7:15, so I would ask that Mr. Sullivan, if you have any report to make, could you make it at this time?
Thank you. Yeah, I just ran through a couple of the election sites today. I just want to thank all the--you know, we've got a lot of volunteer poll workers doing their job. It's--I've never seen it like this. It's pretty crazy, so, you know, there's a lot of good people working on it, including, you know, obviously, like I said, the poll workers, the town clerk's office, and then the detail officers. They're not just standing around, they're asking people where they are so they can direct them to the proper precincts, and it's a lot of people working together, so it's pretty amazing, so greatly appreciate that. I was at the Bayview Park site today, going over the projects. We have a meeting every Tuesday, and things are progressing well. The weather is obviously helping out a lot. They've done the Highland Ave sidewalks. I saw the new stamps coming in for the stamped concrete. They look pretty good. They did--they're doing some tests, so we're going to be able to take a look at those, as well as the color for some of them. So that's really progressing well. The wall that's along Onset Ave, that's going to end up being rebuilt, so that's a little bit of a change, and the part that's currently cement that tails down towards the Onset Pier section, that's actually going to be rebuilt with granite, some of the granite blocks that we have installed over at Municipal Maintenance, so that's exciting. I think that wall is a keystone to it as well, so I'm really excited to see that come together nicely, so that would be the main part. So you need me to speak for about two more minutes without boring everybody?
No, Mr. Bowen, I believe has either a question or a comment for you?
Yeah. Mr. Sullivan is too modest to blow his own horn, but I can tell you that he reached into his own pocket and bought all kinds of refreshments and delivered them personally to the election workers to make sure that they were properly fed and feeling good and feeling excited and energized, so I just thought that's something that you would want to know because he'd be too shy to tell you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a good sugar rush for them. That was the goal, to get them over the hump. It's going to be a long night afterwards, too, so let's keep them all in mind.
Could you speak to the Christmas trees, remembrance trees, excuse me?
The remembrance trees, you can--they are currently available. A little over half have been accounted for, so please come by the office or email. If you go to the town website, www.wareham MA.us, you'll see an announcement for those, and again, they are going fast, and we're limited to, you know, just, I think, just over 100 this year. And what's pretty amazing is you'll see the bollard lights in Bessie Park are coming out, and where those are is where the trees are going to be going for the most part, so that was really ingenious step by Mr. Menard. We were looking and trying to figure out a way to get rid of, you know, the white pipes in the ground and coming up with those bollards, which I know, I think the chairperson is now finally accepting of those, so I think we got--
It wasn't them, it's that they were, you know, sending signals to Mars or something. You could see them from outer space, and they did manage to tone them down, and I think they're beautiful, and I think they serve the purpose of making it a very pleasant and safe place to walk. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anything else, sir?
No, ma'am. I believe you've reached the hour 7:15.
I have. The hour is 7:15, and we have a hearing. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
I move to open the dangerous and hostile hearing for Lawrence St. Germain, 5 Hammond Street, Wareham.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk has indicated yes. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is open. I'm going to turn, running the hearing over to Mr. Bowen, our town counsel, and if you are here, he will be swearing you in for the procedure. Go ahead, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll read the notice. October 9th to address to Mr. Lawrence St. Germain, read dangerous dog hearing notice. Dear Mr. St. Germain, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held before the Select Board on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, at 7:15 p.m. regarding a dog owned or kept by you. Please find attached a complaint letter from the Wareham Animal Control Officer. If you require more information, please let me know at your earliest convenience. Location of the hearing is here. Your attendance is requested at this hearing in person in order that your interest is properly protected. Sincerely, Judith Whiteside, Chair, Wareham Select Board. Okay.
For the record, would you note that it was hand-delivered, as well as sent by certified mail, please?
Yes. So why don't we just mark that as Exhibit 1?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So who've we got here on this hearing?
Good evening. Attorney Jeremy Cohen.
You need to step forward, sir.
Yeah, just come on up in front.
Attorney Jeremy Cohen.
Jeremy, you can sit.
Okay. You're more than welcome.
Yeah, sit.
All right. I'm here from Boston Dog Lawyers, representing Mary Morgan and Lawrence St. Germain, the dog's owner.
I've had the pleasure of working with you before.
Yes, I remember it well. Been about 12 years.
Wow.
But I remember it well.
Yeah. So who've we got here?
I asked for clarification, sir.
Yes.
And maybe this will come up, but he has just stated that Mr. St. Germain and Ms. Morgan own the dog, and that's not what our records show. Is that correct?
Devin Cludier, Wareham Animal Control Officer. I have the dog as being licensed under Lawrence St. Germain. They are obviously living together, so both here to represent the dog, but Lawrence St. Germain has taken ownership of the dog as his dog, as the keeper.
Thank you.
Taken owner together.
I understand that, but in terms of their last names are not the same, there may be some--
You've got to figure out which half of the dog, you know. Okay. So let's just start by swearing in witnesses. Would anybody who intends to testify, please stand and raise your right hand? Lawrence, you and me. All right. Devin, you're going to talk. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. So Devin is the Animal Control Officer. You probably want to give us a brief summary of what you intend to show through your testimony, and then we'll let you testify, and then counsel will be given an opportunity to make an opening statement, and then we'll go back and ask you to testify. Okay? So just briefly, what are you going to tell the board?
So I'm just going to review the requests that I've made for stipulations given to the dog owners moving forward based off of an incident that we had on August 19th, 2024, involving Sandy, which is the dog in question, owned by Mr. Lawrence St. Germain, and another dog owned by Michelle Rodriguez, and then just kind of review all of that.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have an opening statement?
Yes. Thank you. I did submit to the board an electronic--
We have the--
Everybody has it.
Yeah, why don't we mark that as Exhibit-- we're just going to do it numerically, sequentially. So Exhibit 2, which is photograph of--
Sandy the dog.
Sandy the dog. Statutory reference, Chapter 140, Section 157A, as highlighted. Chapter 140, Section 158, then a letter from Professional Canine Services. I don't see a date in it, but we received it on November 5th, and then an invoice for-- to Mary Morgan for the services rendered. Okay, so we'll call that Exhibit 2.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here, as I said, representing the dog's owners, and after speaking with them about the incident and about their management of Sandy, we agree that it can certainly improve. We know that about 15 months ago, the ACO spoke to Mr. St. Germain about the need to keep Sandy on a leash. Sandy's about a two-year-old or so, female spay, German Shepherd, and I'm happy to say over the last 15 months, there's been no reports that, under his control, the dog has got off-leash or got loose. And so clearly, they can comply with an order, it was early recommendation by the ACO. At the same time, they complied with quarantine, the dog being quarantined without violating any of the quarantine, where the dog had to stay with them at their location. They've--for the most recent incident, it certainly was our fault, and it's somewhat unusual to have the pet owner just taking full accountability for it right now. She--Mary Morgan was the one who was really with Sandy that evening at her sister's house on a porch, or daughter's house on a porch, and just lost that guidance system that said, this dog, you have to constantly manage this dog, and she was playing ball with the dog. Sure enough, there's a trigger. The dog sees a small dog, a little brown dog that looks similar to rabbits in the neighborhood, goes after it, and fortunately, the dog didn't die. The bill was fully paid, though, by my client. In getting to know them, I only represent responsible pet owners now, and that's the beauty of being able to meet people and to understand them. I've also had a chance to read and interact, just not with a lot of time, but with Charlie Young. Charlie is handling the training of the dog, and the last page is both his letter, undated, I wish it was dated, but it came in with the invoice, which is dated behind there. This confirms that it was--ACO Codier made a recommendation that to the family before this hearing, you should start really engaging in training, and they did that. So they did it essentially voluntarily, but they know they need ongoing training. They are committed to improving their management of Sandy, and like any of us, are working to be a better dog owner tomorrow than they are today. You'll hear from them that they now use a triple-protection collar system. So they use a three-foot leash, which is what the statute would want, would call for. They use a prong collar as a backup for that, and then they're using and getting trained on an E-collar. The ultimate goal is that if Sandy were to get loose, they should be able to say a command, and that dog come back to them. But I don't know if or when that would happen. I mean, I have an 11-year-old golden retriever, and she will not come back if what she's looking at is more important than my command. But they're working on that, and the E-collar has not-- what the E-collar does is essentially, it's a replacement for a voice command if the leash fails or somebody drops it, or if the prong collar were to break. But those are two commitments to the prong collar and the leash that they've stuck with since August. There hasn't been an incident since the August date, and the E-collar, the trainer is working on that with them because it has to substitute right now for the voice command, and some people may not prefer that there be an E-collar, but the good thing is, she's getting trained on it, and it sounds like the smallest vibrations are getting Sandy's attention now, to pay attention to who's really in charge. And this is all about Mary and Lawrence re-establishing themselves as in charge of the dog, so the dog looks to them for direction instead of taking off when she sees a trigger that interests her. My push tonight is for the board to consider finding Sandy a nuisance dog instead of a dangerous dog, and the reasons are as follows. Under the nuisance definition of the state law, 14157, the definition of nuisance, the remedy for nuisance is very broad. It says that the hearing authority shall may implement anything that will ameliorate the cause of Sandy getting loose here and biting a dog versus the dangerous statute limits you. It limits you to seven things. Seven is euthanasia, so it has six things in there, some of which are just about microchipping and licensing. The reason I put in these statutes, these sections of 14157, there's three pages, if you go to the first page after Sandy's picture, I want to just show the board the consequences for Mary and Lawrence, whether they violate a nuisance order or a dangerous dog order, that the consequences are the same. So the board is not giving up an opportunity here by deeming the dog nuisance to have ultimate control if they were to breach, violate the order. As you can see, 157, capital A lowercase a, an owner or keeper of a dog who fails to comply with an order, and then it tells you they can be fined, it can be jail time. The next one is from 157, little h, another, a second prong, that if an owner or keeper is found in violation of an order, the dog shall be subject to seizure and impoundment. You wouldn't need any court order to impound the dog. You'd be able to seize the dog, and then ultimately, either hold a hearing, or my client could try to get the dog back, but it would be really after a compliance hearing for violating an order. And then the law also allows you to euthanize an unrestrained dog that is already under an order. So those apply whether we deem, you deem, the dog nuisance or dangerous. And the reasons for nuisance that I'm advocating for in addition to you maintaining your power is that training is a key component here with Sandy, and a key component with Mary and Larry getting trained to train Sandy. And I know that Mary's doing a lot of homework on this because you have to do it even when they're not with Charlie Young. So the board can order training, ongoing training, get reports about the training. Charlie Young can submit to ACO Codier on the progress to confirm that there it's ongoing training, whereas if you deem the dog dangerous, it's not one of the things that the legislature has provided. And the other thing is, my clients want to look into getting dog bite liability insurance. And one thing we know here is this dog is not human aggressive, so through its history in town, there's been no human aggression. If this, he takes off if he sees a small dog, and so with no human aggression, they still have an opportunity to get insurance if the dog is deemed nuisance. If you deem the dog dangerous, it just makes it more difficult when you're applying for that insurance. So there's standalone insurance, separate from a homeowner's policy. It's standalone insurance now, dog bite liability insurance. I know, under the statute, they just have to show best efforts, but I think in my experience, if the dog's a nuisance, they have a better chance of getting that insurance. Thank you. That's all I had, and to the extent what I've offered isn't testimony, my clients will certainly confirm what I've discussed.
Thank you. Officer, your complaint has to be under oath.
Yep.
You swear to the complaint that you-- Swear to the complaint that you've made to the board?
I swear.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you go ahead and tell us about what you've learned?
Okay, so I, I'm going to start just by reading my original request, which obviously prior to our discussion here and now, just to kind of go over everything, and I'll read my report that pushed me to put in the dangerous dog request, which is, you know, I, Animal Control Officer Devin Cludier of Wareham Department of Natural Resources, hereby make a request that the dog owned or harbored by Mr. Lawrence Saint Germain at 5 Hammond Street is dangerous as defined by Massachusetts General Law, chapter 140, section 136A by reason of, one, without justification attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or domestic or owned animal. On August 18th, 2024, I responded to a dog bite involving Sandy, a two-year-old female sable German Shepherd-type dog. This incident occurred on Northwater Street where Mr. Saint Germain was visiting with family. Sandy was allowed to be unrestrained on the property where she escaped and attacked another dog in the street. This unprovoked attack resulted in serious bodily harm to the victim dog. Mr. Saint Germain has been very understanding of the repercussions resulting from this incident. Mr. Saint Germain was advised to seek professional training with a trainer specializing in dealing with high-drive dogs leading up to the dangerous dog hearing. It is my understanding that Mr. Saint Germain has been seeing a trainer with Professional Canine Services out of Middleborough since the end of August. Mr. Saint Germain has been meeting with the trainer on a weekly basis. After speaking with the trainer directly, it was relayed to me that Sandy's behaviors are not disproportionate to the breed of dog and lack of owner control. It is my hope that enforcing restrictions with the owner will prevent any future incidences, incidents resulting from a lack of restraint. I do not find Sandy to be aggressive towards people, but she is dog-selective with a high prey drive, which has been the direct factor resulting in this incident. With direct control of the owner and proper restraint of the dog, I do not feel that Sandy will be a continued threat. And then for restrictions, I have requested that the dog be humanely restrained. Provided, however, that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree post or building. Two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the owner or keeper of the dog. Provided, however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. That when the dog is removed from the premises, the owner or premises of the owner, I'm sorry, premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. That the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000. Or, you know, proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. That the owner or keeper of the dog shall provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limiting to, not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing or microchip implantations, or a combination of any such methods of identification. And then the report was based off of the incident that we had on August 19th, 2024, involving Sandy and the dog bite that prompted the request for the dangerous dog hearing, which states on August 19th, 2024, at approximately 7:00 PM, Wareham Department of Communications contacted me, Animal Control Officer Devin Cludier, via phone to request that I contact a Mr. Hector Rodriguez in regards to his dog that had been attacked. Mr. Rodriguez informed me that his wife, Michelle Rodriguez, had been walking their two small dogs on Northwater Street when a German Shepherd-type dog ran off the property of 17 Northwater Street and charged Mrs. Rodriguez's dog. Mr. Rodriguez stated he did not know all the details and stated he would have his wife contact me when she was available. Mr. Rodriguez stated that Mrs. Rodriguez was on her way to the emergency vet with their dog. I advised Mr. Rodriguez that I would follow up with the German Shepherd owner in the meantime. Mrs. Rodriguez called me shortly after and advised me that her dog Zoe, a female Shih Tzu-type dog, was being seen at the emergency room and had been diagnosed with several broken ribs and several other extensive injuries. Mrs. Rodriguez stated that at the time of the incident, she had been walking her two small dogs on Northwater Street when a German Shepherd-type dog charged her and grabbed one of her dogs. Mrs. Rodriguez stated that the German Shepherd grabbed Zoe and began aggressively shaking her. Mrs. Rodriguez stated that the owner promptly retrieved the German Shepherd and secured the dog. The owner then came back and gave her information to Mrs. Rodriguez. Mrs. Rodriguez stated she did not notice any immediate injuries until they returned to their residence. At this point, Mrs. Rodriguez left to receive medical treatment for Zoe. At approximately 8:00 PM, I responded to the address of 17 Northwater Street to make contact with the German Shepherd's owner. I was greeted outside by a Miss Mary Morgan and a Mr. Lawrence Saint Germain. Miss Morgan stated that her and her partner, Mr. Saint Germain, were visiting family at 17 Northwater Street, but had returned their dog Sandy, a two-year-old female sable German Shepherd-type dog, to the residence at 5 Hammond Street. Mrs. Morgan stated that she had been sitting on the porch with Sandy when Miss Rodriguez walked by with her dogs and Sandy immediately charged and began to attack Mrs. Rodriguez's dog. Miss Morgan stated she immediately retrieved Sandy and secured her in the house before coming back to check on Mrs. Rodriguez and provide her, her information. Mrs. Morgan stated that Mrs. Rodriguez didn't notice any injuries at the time of the incident and left after the exchange. Mr. Saint Germain is known to me, known to me to be the main owner and handler of Sandy. I issued a 10-day Rebe's quarantine to Mr. Saint Germain and I advised Mr. Saint Germain that I would be pursuing a dangerous dog hearing and advised Mr. Saint Germain of what restrictions could be including, included moving forward. So with all of that being said, I do really like the idea of the dog getting professional training. Professional Canine Services is a, it's a pair of trainers that are known to me to deal with high-aggression type dogs, high-drive type dogs. Previously have done a lot of work with canine-type dogs as well. I do feel, even though it can't be enforced under the dangerous dog hearing, that that would be the most effective way to see a behavioral change in Sandy that would not be reliant solely based on the handler and his ability to maintain that leash. It would provide more structure to the dog. But all of that being said, I do still want to keep the restrictions of securing the dog on a three-foot leash. The dog cannot be unrestrained. That is my biggest request in all of this. I love the idea of training moving forward and continue training that we can keep up with, with the trainers. But I will leave that up to the board to make their decisions.
Counsel, do you have questions for the ACO?
Just a couple, thank you. Have you, you mentioned restraint on the property. So have you been to the property?
I, I have.
Okay, they have a fenced-in yard?
Yes.
If you recall, if you don't, that's fine. But any reports of dog, dog going over the fence, under the fence, escaping that fenced-in yard?
Nope, I have never had a report of Sandy leaving her property.
Okay. And if, so you're amenable to maybe getting a report on a set basis from this trainer?
Yes.
To confirm that they're training?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and that's it, thank you.
Could I make one more comment in regards to the training? I personally, in my experience, I find that, you know, a dog is only as safe as the handler is if the dog does not have, you know, recall, basic manners, basic training that the dog has been presented with. The best-case scenario and most responsible method, I think, moving forward is the combination of restraint and training on this dog. I, I do believe that that's where we're, we could see the best outcome.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chather?
Ms. Corvus first.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you. To counsel, you mentioned over the last 15 months, there hasn't been an incident. So what was the initial incident 15 months ago?
Dog getting off-leash and jumping in when, when another, another dog came, came towards it, another smaller dog. And they, it's just big dog, small dog. The smaller dog had gone after another smaller dog that my client was with. And the German Shepherd asserted itself. No, no medical bills, nobody, nothing like that. It was just, it was the dogs. Big dog and little dog got together, but no, no injuries that I'm aware of. But that's when the ACO became aware of it and said, okay, no more off-leash. So actually, I'll ask you, if I can. Since that August 2023 event, have you, have you received reports other than what happened in August 2024 that Sandy was off-leash?
I had one other incident involving Sandy. So the incident in question on that was, I have one, January 2nd, 2023, which I believe is the one that you're mentioning. Yes, yes. So January 2nd, 2023 was the incident that I had with Mr. Lawrence Saint Germain, who had Sandy off-leash on a private beach. And then another gentleman with his dog was also off-leash on a private beach. Private property, both dogs were off-leash. The report that I got from Mr. Saint Germain does reflect what the council has said, that the opposing dog charged towards the smaller dog and Sandy intervened at that point. There was no injury sustained during that incident. And the dangerous dog statute does protect a dog from being considered dangerous based off of protecting another animal, livestock, property owner, things like that. So I did not include that in my dangerous dog request. My second and only other incident with Sandy was on August 12th of 2023, which at that point was another similar incident. Two dogs, private property, both dogs were off-leash. And the owner of that dog at the time of the incident declined to speak with me further. So I do not have any proof of what transpired at that point.
I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
What is the fencing like at the owner's house?
From this fence, the way in, in the way out of this fenced-in area is through the house. So I've been told there's not a gate, that the dog doesn't go through a gate. It's connected directly to the house. So when they go out, come in, under these circumstances, the dog would still be on some type of a restraint. I believe is what ACO is getting at. So that even when the dog's in the yard, there's some type of restraint. Maybe it's, it's the E-collar. Or maybe as she recommended, there's a tie-out. So something like a long runner for a dog. So that way she can still exercise, but she's, and she'd be supervised. So nobody, dog's not outside without a human being outside.
Could I ask you to, to get, what type of fence is it?
Right, what, what material is used for the fencing?
And how tall is it?
Chain link, wood?
I don't know that, but.
I think it's a combination of both chain link and wooden picket in the front. I do not know what the back of the fencing looks like. I've only seen what's visible from the street when I've seen Sandy to issue the quarantines and release them. And at that point, there was, I have seen Sandy in the backyard in that fence and she did not make an effort to jump over the fence to try to get to me. I do want to make a clarification on the restraint part of it. The difference between the nuisance dog and the dangerous dog would be if we do find Sandy to be deemed dangerous, the restraint would have to be, she could not be left on an inanimate tie-out. She would have to have somebody holding the other end of that leash and being in full control restraint. But if she was to be deemed a nuisance dog, we could make an order that she could have a tie-out, a secured line in the back, and it would change a little bit in that regards. And I don't feel that Sandy is enough of a risk that she wouldn't be restrained on an inanimate tie-out.
Okay, as long as if she's restrained, we have a German Shepherd that lives right next door to us and they have a stockade fence. And she is a high-energy dog. And she jumps against the fence and the owners have had to like constantly repair. Was it not an issue of jumping up over it?
Yes. I have never personally witnessed Sandy behaving that way in the backyard at the fencing. I obviously don't see her every day at it, but I've never had reports of her behaving that way with the fencing. When I've witnessed her in the backyard, I've never seen her behave that way towards the fencing.
And just an observation, it does sound like the owners need training too. I own a high-energy dog who does not listen to me. She's a Springer Spaniel, so she's not as, as heavy and strong as Sandy is. But where we've ended up with is, I guess it's an E-collar. It's a collar that has sounds or vibrations, or at the very worst, a shock, which we would never use it. But if we turn it all the way up with the beep, she comes back.
I do find that, I think, is the biggest reason why I'm advocating for training because it's not only just on the dog, it is with the owners. And the problems that I've had with Sandy are a direct result of lack of control from the owners and the inability to understand her behavior in that regard. And I think dealing with educated professionals that can not only work with the dog and provide that security, but to teach the owners how to properly handle a high-drive dog that can be extremely dog-selective.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk, questions?
I, I have a question. Can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
That was a good question.
Yes. My question is, let's assume that, that we were to go forward and find that, that Sandy is a nuisance dog as opposed to a dangerous dog. And let's, let's assume that another similar incident to the one that we're discussing here now happens again. What, what would the consequences be at that point if she were considered to be a nuisance dog versus a dangerous dog?
May I? So as the counsel has provided here, the repercussions would be the same. We could still find the dog owner in the same, in the same violation with the same citation amounts. And it does state, as he brought up, which I was not even fully aware of, that if the dog is found even as a nuisance, the dog, I mean, could, worst-case scenario, still be found to be euthanized under the worst-case scenario kind of stuff. So as far as I'm understanding, the repercussions would be exactly the same. If, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Except the hearing would no longer be to this dog, is this dog a nuisance or dangerous? It would be, you violated an order. So it wouldn't be a discussion like this. It would be stepped up, like you violated an order and here's the, here's the consequences of that.
Ms. Quirk?
So is, is the, is the major distinction then whether the dog can be outside, unaccompanied and restrained versus not? Are there, are there other distinctions?
I think the biggest distinction, and again, as ACO Cartier pointed out, under nuisance, you can still order what we, I had mentioned before, that there's an adult outside, the dog's on a, on a tie-out within the yard. But the bigger distinction is the ability of the town to enforce the training. It's a fault in the statute, but under dangerous, there's no provision for training. Under nuisance, it's, it's just a wider, broader spectrum where they say whatever you, whatever needs to be done to ameliorate the cause. And so I think because of the type of owners we have who are engaged in it and hearing from ACO Cartier, and because there's been no human aggression, they, this, they need to be trained along with their dog. And I think that's probably the most important part of this, aside from always being leashed.
Right.
May I just ask counsel if what he has said is correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And yes.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Quirk?
Just one last question. I, I am inferring from what the animal control officer has said that she is comfortable with deeming this dog to be a nuisance dog. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. As counsel has stated, deeming the dog nuisance really opens up our ability to add more restrictions that are not enforceable under the dangerous dog. If the dog were to be deemed dangerous, we only have the, essentially what I've presented along with a few others that aren't really relevant to. that aren't really relevant to this situation, you know, with Sandy being, she's already fixed, you can order that under a dangerous dog, but you are not allowed to request any further restrictions on the dog. So we could not enforce training, continued behavior modification under a dangerous dog, where we can open that up a lot more under a nuisance dog.
It's really death penalty oriented.
Yes, yeah.
Not just, not to find a point on it.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk, what's that? Mr. Chadwick?
All right, so I'm just gonna read something real quick. I just want you guys to understand, Ms. Morgan and Mr. St. Germain. I love dogs. I've had shepherds, I've had shih-tzus. Every dog I've ever had, from labs, everything. You could probably, I could probably write a book for you guys on dogs. Luckily for me, every dog I've ever had listens to my commands. Very stern with them. But one thing I want to read in, and I'm a huge dog nut. You guys can ask anyone, so I sympathize with you guys on this. But one thing I want to read here for you guys, so you are aware. Master and Rule Law, Part One, Title 20, Chapter 140, Section 156. I'm sure you are aware of it. Any person may kill a dog which suddenly assaults him while he is peacefully standing, walking, or riding outside the enclosure of its owner or keeper. And any person may kill a dog found out of the enclosure of its owner or keeper and not under immediate care in the act of worrying or wandering of killing persons. Life socks are foul. And if any person should kill or attempt to kill so found in the act of worrying, wounding, or killing persons, life socks are foul. He shall not be held liable for cruelty to the dog unless it has been shown they intend to be cruel to the dog, and so on and so forth. You guys can look this right up. And the only reason I bring this up, if that person that was walking their shih-tzu at any point in time felt threatened by your dog, they could have killed your dog and they could have walked away without anything happening. And this is where I bring up the point where I love dogs. I don't want to see that happen to anyone. I love dogs more than humans and I believe my dogs are a part of my family. So I just want to make you aware of this. You guys got lucky this time. Someone else could have something on them. And if your dog got out and got to them, your dog would not be here. And I read this to everyone that comes before us about dogs. And like I said, I love dogs more than humans, so just want to make you guys aware. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I have several questions. I need to know the height of the fence.
The fence itself?
Yes.
Two sides?
Could you step up to the mic, please? And identify yourself for the record.
Where the backyard is.
Excuse me, just wait until you sit down, please.
Is, the backyard is.
Excuse me, sir. Identify yourself for the record after you sit down.
Lawrence St. Germain.
Thank you, your address, sir.
What was that? I can't hear you.
Your address, sir.
Is 5 Hammond Street.
Thank you. Now, go ahead. Could you answer the question about the height of the fence, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
What, what his fence is six foot high. And on one small piece, there's like a, something that you'd use on a farm, like a heavy-duty, open fence that's probably five feet high. But it goes, if she jumped over it, she'd be going down about 12 feet. So I don't, she's never tried to get over the fence. And then two sides of it is the yard, is, is a house on both sides. So it's in between two houses.
Okay, so is it, it's a rectangular, more or less shaped fence?
More or less square, but I would say that where it starts to get away from the house, it turns into, on that side and in the front side, is probably a six-foot-high fence.
Okay, and I think you said that the only entrance to this, to this yard was through the house? Did I understand that correctly?
Two houses together.
So can I?
Please.
So the question is, I've, I've been told that the only way into this yard.
Through the house.
Is through the house.
Right.
So is there a gate or is it just through the house that you can get into?
Just through one door.
Okay.
In and out.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. And approximately, how big is the enclosure? 10 by 10, 20 by 10, 10?
The size of it?
Yeah, roughly.
Ballpark, I would say 20 by 30, maybe 600 square feet.
Okay, thank you. What is the weight of the dog?
I would, she hasn't been weighed for a while because she doesn't like to scale. So I would take a, a shot of maybe 80 pounds.
Thank you. Do you have other animals?
Yeah, we have another smaller dog.
Breed?
A West Highland.
So approximately? It's not in the same area?
Yeah, it's a.
No.
West Highland Terrier.
Okay.
So they're both in the house all the time, together.
All right, thank you. Is it appropriate to read into the record the injuries for the other dog?
If you like.
I do like, not like.
They were already read into the record by Devon.
No, the injuries were not. There's a letter from the owner of the dog.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Broken ribs.
So this is from the owner of the dog. On Monday, August 19th, 2024, I was walking my two Shih-tzus dogs and was crossing the street to my home at 15 Northwater Street onset. My 13-year-old, 10-pound dog Zoe was attacked. I heard a woman yelling, "No, Sammy, stop," or something along those lines. I don't remember exactly what was said, but what did register was the panic in her voice. I immediately squatted down to scoop up both dogs in my arms when within seconds that dog came over my right shoulder and snatched Zoe from me. The dog then violently and repeatedly slammed her back and forth on the cement while I was screaming and trying to free her from his grip. I'm not sure how long this lasted. I only remember seeing her lying on the ground when she was fully, finally released. It was the most terrifying experience of my life. My dogs were leashed, not barking or displaying any provoking behavior. We did not even have a line of sight of the other dog. Her dog had to be hospitalized and sustained five broken ribs, two of them in multiple places, and puncture wounds. She has been slowly improving, but we were told that they were surprised that she survived. My husband and I have been in contact with Ms. Morgan, the dog's owner. She's been very distraught, remorseful, and has assumed full responsibility for the incident and all medical bills for Zoe. She's checked in on her progress as well. I know that this was not intentional and don't feel that she was being irresponsible. I had seen the dog the day before when I had walked by without my dogs and did not feel any concern for safety. The dog was sitting next to Mary on the front porch and did not seem threatening at all. I'm not sure what spurred the dog to attack. If I had to say on the outcome of this hearing, it would be to mandate that they have professional training specific to this type of German Shepherd dog. The owners need to be able to control their dog with voice commands. This was a horrible accident, but I feel very lucky knowing it could have been a lot worse. I would like that entered into the record as Exhibit 3. I have some more questions.
Chief.
Yep. Oh, I'm keeping them.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Is she chipped? Is she microchipped?
Yes.
Has she always had her, has she always been licensed and current on her shots, et cetera? Since, since.
As far as I've known Sandy and Mr. St. Germain, she has been always licensed and vaccinated and up to date.
Thank you. I fully, I would like to see the credentials of the trainer. It's nice that you are familiar with the company, but I would like in the record, a copy of their credentials.
So in the state of Massachusetts, there's not any sort of requirements for somebody to consider themselves a dog trainer? I have spoken to Mr. St. Germain at length about this in the past, where he has, when we've discussed training, he has mentioned that he has worked with several trainers and we discussed the importance of finding a trainer that's familiar and comfortable with dealing, again, with the high-drive aggressive dogs, dogs that have bite histories versus, he, you could see any trainer. I do not feel comfortable allowing them to take, you know, somebody that's just a pet co-puppy trainer kind of situation. I have advised against that in the past and I have given Mr. St. Germain several recommendations, Professional Canine Services being one of the trainers that I've recommended that he has used in the past. There's unfortunately not any specific credentials that I could present to the board. I guess really the only thing would be what they, their history as professionals, working with the, they were both canine handlers, as far as I'm aware, for different police forces. They've worked with a lot of the training canine dogs. They've trained therapy dogs. They've, they're widely experienced across a board of different behaviors and dogs.
Thank you. When the dog is being trained, is it at the location? Does it stay at the location overnight? Does it live there or does it go home to its?
No, so my, one of the other recommendations that I had with Mr. St. Germain regarding Sandy was there's two different types of training. There's training where you're actively participating with your dog and you're learning how to handle your dog. And you go on, you know, a weekly basis, a bi-weekly basis, a daily basis, whatever it is that the trainer has set up, versus what's called a board and train, where the dog is then sent away for two, three weeks, whatever the case is, and they're trained solely with the trainer. I, in these situations where it's a handler error, I don't typically like seeing a board and train because I don't feel that the owners are actively participating and learning how to control their dog. I find that it's most effective when they're actively participating for extended periods.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, that's good to know. So I've heard that Ms. Morgan is going to be, going to the trainer, but one of the suggestions that I'm going to be making is that both individuals, both get trained with the dog, one-on-one, one-on-one, and then two-on-one. That, that would be part of my recommendation, that both owners.
I had previously spoken to the trainer that's working with Sandy and that was on, I spoke, I wanted to speak to the trainer before I put in my recommendations. So if I remember correctly, it was around the time of September 15th. And at that point, I know that he had had at least one session with also Mr. St. Germain. I do agree that I would like to see both parties actively participating in the training.
And I believe you said that, that they've been through several trainers? They've been to other trainers?
Mr. St. Germain has stated to me in the past that they have seen a trainer for Sandy, which wouldn't surprise me, but most of the time when people seek out training for a dog that has never shown behavioral issues, it's usually your basic commands. So they see a trainer to learn the basics of sit-down, stay, come, things like that, but it doesn't actually address behavioral issues. So more often than not, when I come into these situations where there is a bite or something on record that has been presented as a behavioral issue when people say that they've seen a trainer, it has not been to correct behavior patterns. It's to teach the basic manners.
Okay, thank you. I, in your recommendation, you have four recommendations. And I would like to add to them, but could you read into the record what those recommendations are? And then I think we should discuss whether we want to add, subtract, or whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yes, yep.
So, all right. Dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog? And that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog-run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. Are you guys okay with that?
Yep.
Guys and gals?
Well, before we get.
Yep, yep.
Before we get to the question.
Yeah, we need to.
There are some things we need to do.
Precedural, okay. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bowen, sorry.
That's quite all right. Concluding remarks, anyone?
Thank you for the chance. It would just be repetitive. I appreciate the attention that the board's given us. Thank you.
I would also like to amend some of my recommendations based off of this. I ideally would like to see Sandy be considered a nuisance dog so we can enforce the training, which we would not be able to do if she was considered a dangerous dog. So I would like to change this from a dangerous to a nuisance and formally request that we do maintain training for an extended period of time. What that is, I don't know at this moment. I would like to discuss that with the trainer, but I would say a minimum of, if we, sorry, let me just look at the receipts that they have. But I would like to enforce that absolutely, that both parties are to be trained with the dog continuously. So we're at.
Counsel, do you have a suggestion as to what an appropriate length might be?
I think, I think 90 days would be the first phase to see where they're at. Now, that's not 90 training sessions, but that's them coming back, doing their homework with the dog.
If we're gonna go for 90 days, three months, I would like that to be on at least a weekly basis, alternating weeks between Ms. Morgan and Mr. St. Germain, and then reassess at the 90-day period on where the trainer feels that both parties are at in regards to how they handle Sandy and then where Sandy is at. We're currently at, as of this invoice, eight sessions. 90 days would put us at approximately, what, 12 more sessions? If I'm doing my math correctly? So that would be a total of 20 sessions. And that is, I think, a very generous amount of time to give.
90 days with 20 sessions?
In total, so the 20 sessions would include the eight that they've already done. We would be requesting at least 12 more sessions moving forward.
But it would be an even number. In other words, each of them would have to have done 10 or whatever. She apparently is the one who's done the eight.
So moving for, Mr. St. Germain has been.
No, hang on.
Sorry, Mr. St. Germain has been involved in some of the training sessions. I do not have an accurate number of how many Ms. Morgan has been involved is versus Mr. St. Germain up until this point. So for the consecutive 12 sessions, I would like to see Ms. Morgan participate in six of them and Mr. St. Germain participate in six of them at a sheer minimum. If anything, I think it would also be appropriate to see the both of them attend each of the training sessions, which could put them both at the 12. I know in my experience with Professional Canine Services, they will alternate during the session on who's handling the dog and who's participating.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bowen.
Devon, did you have anything else?
The only other amendment that I think would be fair to make if we're changing the status from dangerous to nuisance is that specification between an inanimate object versus somebody active, and this is only in the yard. If Sandy is ever off of the property, on any other piece of property, I do still want to see the three-foot leash, a person holding that leash. The leash cannot be restrained to an inanimate object. But on the property in the backyard, I think it would be fair to request at least a tether system where she could be let out in the backyard on a secondary restraint. I think that would be fair to, to amend that.
Can I ask, may I ask her a question? In previous hearings, you've suggested that the dog be handled by somebody at least 18 years old or somebody who can handle the dog?
Yes, I still think that would be appropriate, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other testimony, I think it'd be appropriate to have a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is closed.
The members of the board, there are two matters left for you to consider. The first would be a finding as to whether you found the animal control officer's complaint credible. And if you. And if you did not, the proceeding would end. If you did, you would then move to a second step, which would be to consider a motion as to appropriate remedy. So at this point, if somebody made a motion as to whether they found the animal control officer's complaint credible or not, that would be the step.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I move to find Animal Officer Devon Cludier's complaint credible.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to find the complaint credible. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
So now this comes to the question of what remedies would be appropriate based on the evidence that you've heard and the animal control officer's recommendations?
So she has several recommendations and she's added a couple. So can we, would it be proper to do them one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I move that the dog be humanely restrained, provided however that no order shall provide that the dog deemed dangerous to be chain-tethered or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree post or building.
Excuse me, one second. She, she has recommended nuisance.
I'm sorry, I put nuisance on the wrong page.
So the motion would...
Beyond that, though, Jared, the chainly, chained to an inanimate object part has changed.
No, I put it on the second page, too.
Okay.
So could, I'm sorry, could you restate your motion, sir?
Why don't we start with, we move that she be considered a nuisance dog. It's not there.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Second.
Okay, I moved it, he seconded.
Is there any further discussion to, on the motion to find the dog a nuisance dog? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the dog is deemed nuisance. Next.
All right, next, I got that both the owner, both owners actively be involved with a professional trainer for 90 days, 12 sessions, six with Ms. Morgan and six with Mr. St. Germain.
But, but that they both attend as many as they can jointly, I believe, was the recommendation.
A minimum for each of them having attended six, but that could increase. So a minimum of six sessions individually, or they could also attend, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion which was made and seconded? None, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
All right, another one is that the dog be handled by someone over the age of 18.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion that the dog will always be handled by somebody at least of the age of 18? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
The dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however that the confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog-run area upon the premises of the owner or the keeper.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on his motion which was printed on a yellow sheet of paper? Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
That when, I move that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely restrained with a chain or other tethered device, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length.
Second.
Motion made and seconded as outlined by Mr. Chadwick. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Chad, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move that the owner of the keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000 ensuring the owner and the keeper against claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property results from the act, whether intentional or unintentional of the dog, or prove the reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued, provided however that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority or justice of the district court and to provide further. And if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof, efforts to obtain such insurance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded as read into the record. Is there any further... Mr. Cohen, I have copies of, save you a little bit of scrivviness.
There's other things added to that.
Yeah, I know, but, but he's trying to copy them. Thank you, I'm sorry. Motion made and seconded as Mr. Chadwick read. Is there any further discussion on that motion? That would be number three on the piece of paper that you're looking at, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move that the owner of the keeper of the dog provide the license, authority, or animal control officer or other enti, Jesus. Sorry, entity identified in the order, informed by which a dog may be identified throughout a lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, video, veterinarian examination, tattooing, or microchipping, implantation, or a combination of any such methods of identification.
Second.
Motion made and seconded as read into the record, which is number four, Mr. Cohen on your, okay. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay.
That is all the motions ahead.
Let me just double check. I would like to add that we have every couple of weeks a report from the trainer, which is sent to Ms. Cludier as, as well as to them. And that we get a copy in our records that they, in fact, are attending the sessions.
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion? Any further discussion on the motion for every-two-week report?
Could we do every three weeks?
Sure. Is that okay with whoever seconded the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to have reports from the trainer every three weeks, which would be forwarded to the Department of Natural Resources as well as this office? Thank you. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. And I think we have covered it.
Letter will be forthcoming.
And as you know, Mr. Cohen, you have the right to appeal on behalf of your client. You know the drill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably better than most.
Do you wish us to send the letter to you and your clients? Or you, on behalf of your clients, how would you like it delivered, sir?
Do you mind both of us?
That's fine.
Them as well. But I will accept service so that you don't have to serve it on them if that's how the town does.
Yeah, that's fine.
Probably send it by email.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but I'm, I'm going to clarify that the, in my mind, both of them are owners of the dog. And so I'm going to have the letter addressed to both of them as well as yourself.
That sounds right.
Okay. All right. Okay, excellent. I think we have disposed of that. Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. Nice to see you.
Do we need to close the hearing?
Thank you all.
We did.
Great seeing you.
If it's, if it's another 12 years.
Thank you.
All right, I move to...
Mr. Cohen, do you want another copy?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, move to open the hearing for the application for alterations of premises, Harborview Restaurant, 59 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing, offer the application, the alteration of premises for Harborview Restaurant at 59 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Is there a discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is open. Before us, we have Mr. Warren, who is the owner of the property. He currently is licensed with an all-alcohol license. He has a common vic license and he has an entertainment license for inside the, I would call it the confines of the building known as the restaurant portion. Mr. Warren is looking to expand his ability to serve liquor to his entire property. That requires a hearing, which is what we are doing here. It does not require a notification of his butters, which is why we are doing this. So, Mr. Warren, would you care to address this board?
Yes.
Would you identify yourself with the record, sir?
My name is Danny Warren. I'm the owner of the Harborview.
And would you like to, why, tell us why you want to do this, sir?
Yes, we want to be able to serve beer and wine out in that gazebo area and in the lawn and that type of stuff. I don't see us putting hard liquor out there. But I don't want to take that away, but I really don't see us, that's the plan for that because we're just going to kind of keep that up on those decks. We'd also like to be able to serve on the lower deck because we'd planned from the beginning to have a raw bar there and some things like that that we've already purchased on there in the basement. So we'd like to follow that, that would be on the lower deck. But we want to be able to do that. And as we move forward with some of the things that we want to do there, we'd like to be able to serve beer and stuff outside.
Thank you. Do you intend to put a bar itself, a separate bar, outside of your rest, what I would call the main restaurant building?
The bar that we would put out there will be on wheels. It'll go in and out and back into the building.
Thank you, sir.
Any other thing I would say, when we get to that point, we will always have the details. We're going to try to run a really high-quality thing there and not let it turn into a circus. And if it tries to turn into a circus, we'll stop it.
When you say details, sir, what do you mean?
Police department.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Corbett.
Ms. Whiteside, you said he wants to have it on his entire property, but it sounds from here and from what you just said, it's the pavilion, the lawn between the pavilion and the main building, and then the lower deck of the main building. It's not your entire property outside.
It does not include the parking lot, that's correct.
Not the parking lot, or the other side of the building.
No, not the other side of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions of Mr. Warren?
Negative.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Warren? And his application? Is there anyone who would choose to speak against Mr. Warren's application? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
So moved?
So moved, sorry.
Guys.
Who moved? Second. Jared moved, I second.
Motion made to close the hearing is, and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now closed. I will now accept a motion.
I move for the approval of the application for alterations of premises, Harborview Restaurant, 59 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as applied for. Now, before we take the vote, I'm going to make a statement. This does not in any way impact your occupancy load, which has been set by the building inspectional services. That is clear, Mr. Warren.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We'll send you letters on that, sir. When we were discussing this earlier, Mr. Warren had indicated that he would be putting signs up on the, I would call it the berm between the parking lot as well as the lawn, indicating that there is to be no liquor served or carried beyond that point. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay. So I, in the, I don't, we have the dimensions of the location on record. But he has indicated also that for larger events, there would be police detail, duty detail. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. Any other questions of Mr. Warren? Nope. Then, thank you very much, Mr. Warren, and thank you for investing in the town of Wareham. We appreciate it.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Do we have to close the hearing?
No, we didn't.
Motion adjourned.
We did already. Is there any other business to come before this board? Hearing none?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. It is not debatable. Is there, go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the meeting is adjourned at 8:25. Good night, Wareham, and thank you.